Sheldon School Board meeting to order at 6:00. First up, we have comments and correspondence from the public. I haven't received anything in writing, although we do have some guests tonight. Is there anything? I know we have our students who are going to be presenting. Was there anything else from anybody else who's here?
Well, I have a question. How come I wasn't here last meeting? And my question I had, were you being appointed to the board is not mentioned in the minutes?
I think you weren't there last meeting. So let's look at the minutes when we get to that part. Are you, is that specifically what you're talking about, Brian? Fold those questions in regards to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just gonna push that for that review. I guess we do have some guests we're gonna present. We're gonna be looking at meeting minutes after that. So we're gonna come back to that part. Is there anything else from anybody? Okay. I'll turn it over to you guys if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, because I don't think we all know you.
So, my name's Cole Boyle. And yeah.
I'm Morgan Jettie.
I'm Mercedes Chanty.
And we're gonna be the representatives today from the Sheldon Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Getting to Y thing. So Getting to Y is basically an opportunity for students to, how do I put this? To learn about, learn about different problems and how we can help them, specifically in our school districts. So organizing retreat to get input from other people and looking at past year's data to try to help next year's.
So on January 4th, 2019, our leadership group facilitated a hack day workshop with all the students in seventh, in grade seven and eight. We examined and analyzed FNWSU's middle school WRBS data and voted on what students believed were strengths in areas of concern.
So just got a couple of pictures. A lot of the activities were centered around everybody kind of working on stuff. So we had icebreaker games and a web of different assets.
Areas of strength that we discovered were 80% of Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union in versus 76% of Vermont Middle School students believe there's at least one adult in their school they can take a talk to if they have a problem or anything to ask. 98% of Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union Middle School students wear seat belts. 95% where students think their parents or guardians feel it would be wrong or very wrong for them to smoke cigarettes.
So we went through, there's like over 100 questions. Those of you who are aware of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and these guys went through them, and they picked out what they thought were the amazing things that were going on in our district, and then the areas that we need to, we need to take a look at that, we need to address those problems. So those were those three areas of strength that they identified that were really great. And now you're gonna see the three areas of concern.
So, like you said, we identified three areas of concern. So 41% of FNWSU Middle School students versus 37% Vermont Middle School students think alcohol would be sort of easy to get. And some causes we have are parents or family have alcohol at their home, and is perceived as legal or safe, lack of supervision, lack of parent or child conversations about the dangers of alcohol. And students does focus more on cigarettes as being a health problem and not very much alcohol.
So proposed action steps were for alcohol to be easy to get, were to provide more parent education, speakers, parents, supervision, and parenting tips, encouraging more communication from parent to child about dangers of alcohol use and abuse, send conversation starters home monthly, have families sign a pledge to lock up alcohol and medicines at home, have athletic director talk about dangers of alcohol use and abuse, and sign contract with all athletes. And then more after-school programs for grades five through eight.
9% of Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union Middle School students have had sexual intercourse versus 5% of Vermont Middle School students. Children are sexualized at a young age, overexposed, or, yeah, overexposed sexually, implicit images, media, violence, drug, alcohol abuse, there's lack of supervision, family stressors, trauma, or trauma, low self-esteem, and peer pressure.
So some proposed steps to get rid of this is sexual abuse prevention and health education for grades K through eight, to kind of educate parents and guardians to promote their parent-child conversations about healthier relationships and sex, and offer after, more after-school and evening activities for middle school students just to try to get them something to do.
And then another concern was 26% of FNWSU Middle School students have ever seriously thought about killing themselves versus 18% Vermont Middle School students. And some of the root causes were that history of medical health problems in family, school was bullying and learning disabilities, stress from peers, sports, and school, lack of resiliency and copying skills, family stressors, divorce, financial housing, abuse, and violence.
Proposed action steps, suicide, or...
It's the SEL, the Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. That's for the teachers to do, not for you guys to do. So Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, excuse me.
Okay. SEL curriculum in guidance and wellness classes, continue to educate staff, parents, and sign off. And symptoms, establish a peer support program, train students to provide support to their peers, have awareness, presentation screening two times yearly, and continue rec nights.
Those were the three areas of concern, which I'm sure we in all acknowledge as super concerning. And the idea is that not only the students, but then we had about 55 people come. We had a community dialogue night, and we had about 55 people in attendance. Students were there, parents were there, staff members were there, and also some experts in the community who work with these different youth issues. And we identified additional action steps that we can take here at school and also work on in our larger Sheldon community, and utilize the resources that we have here, both in Sheldon but also in the larger Franklin County community. So this is how we decide the projects that we're gonna work on in our leadership group. This is how we decide the projects that we're gonna work on in VCAT. This is how we came up with doing rec nights. So we're trying to be really mindful about the data that we're receiving and using it to guide us to make some good healthy choices and programs and activities for the students in our school. And we just took the Youth Risk Behavior Survey again, just in February, so we'll be able to look at that information. Hopefully, we'll get that back either, I don't know, maybe the fall. Sometimes it takes a really long time. We're still working with the 2017 information, but we wanted the kids to be able to participate in the program, because it's a good experience. And they really did a wonderful job. Do you guys have any questions?
I just want to say that I went to the dialogue night, and you guys did an awesome job. There were a lot of students younger than you guys that really heard what you were saying. You guys are role models here, and thank you for being there for the rest of the kids here in our community. Thank you, guys.
There are also really tough issues that people were talking about at tables that had community members, parents, students, all having difficult conversations about things that are, you know, hard for even us to talk about at school sometimes. So it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was.
You all did a really wonderful job of sharing the work and leading the groups, and you did, you were wonderful role models, and you just showed off just all of the resilience and skills that you have.
Thank you.
It was very impressive.
If there's anything that we can do as a board, or however much longer we are a board, if there's anything that we can do to support you guys, especially with your action steps, let us know.
Thanks.
I also, I was, you touched upon it in your presentation, but the work that you did around assets, about identifying those, was also really impressive, because when you had them up, when you had them up on the wall, and then asked us to go around and community members to go around and add to them, there were some that I was looking at, and I was thinking, I'm not sure I can come up with another one. You know, like it was really hard to think of something you hadn't already thought of. Nice job. And I was, you know, kind of proud of our community for having the number of assets that there were up there.
And one thing I wanted to point out is where we got to write down a success where kids felt as though that they had an adult here at the school that they could talk to if they had a problem, that was actually probably 10% lower the WRBS prior to. And I really think with bringing on the additional homeroom and doing the team-building activities that you guys did at the beginning of the school year, and bringing on rec nights, that we really just made a large improvement in the relationship building here at school. So when we see this stuff, it's really powerful when we actually make some programs or address some education or do some activities to address these issues, and then we see the improvement. So it's really great. All right. Well, thank you. Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Oh, and you reached. Careful. Get your own. Oh, sorry. Do you need this?
No, I have my own.
You're welcome. So we are on to our approval on March 12th meeting minutes. And Brian, you had some questions on those. So the first one was, I do see that you're not listed, and I know that you were there because the minutes reflect that you have questions. And so we just, if we can adjust that sort of role call at the top of the minutes. What to include, Brian?
And is my question on there is like, the way that you were appointed to the...
So I see that under 3.0 comments and correspondence from the public. So we talked about the elections and then also the teacher contracts.
I guess I don't have that page.
Oh. Oh, did it not double side or something? It's, it's...
Hold on.
I have it up here about you asked why the board vacancies were not part of town meeting, and we talked about how we, well, at first we were gonna appoint, but then the Secretary of State said that the board vacancies didn't exist because we didn't hold an election. So that Julia is still on the board.
Right, because the page I had didn't have that.
No. No, he doesn't have the...
That makes sense. I was like, why, it's there, no. I remember you being there, and I remember the conversation.
So, yeah, to make sure we...
Right, because to me, it's one of the things, if it's not in writing, that didn't happen.
Yeah, absolutely. I just had one change. We entered executive session at 7:15, but our adjournment says it was 7:12. So I think our adjournment was then 7:45. Should be 7:45. Otherwise, they looked good to me. Do you guys have any? So I'd enter tan motion to approve the April 12th meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 12th.
March?
March 12th. Oh, yeah, we're in April now. March 12th, four meeting minutes.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moving on to old business, and I would like to introduce and invite Lynn and Morgan up. If you guys want to come join us at the table, just because it could be a lot of...
Totally up to you.
...your input in the next few conversations. So Brian, I don't know if you know Lynn and Morgan. So Lynn is the superintendent for Franklin Northeast.
Thanks, Julia.
And Morgan is the business manager. So we'll start with Act 46 updates.
Yes, we're pretty broad here in terms of legislative updates and litigation. I mean, I know there was a hearing, and we should be getting a decision. You probably are on the email list, so you probably get these updates more than, more than I do. But we should be expecting a decision from Judge Mello pretty soon. From what I've heard, he is likely going to hang on to some aspects of the case and discuss them further in the Superior Court, and some of them he'll make a decision so they can move on to the Supreme Court. Is that what you're hearing as well?
Yeah.
I think it's, I would anticipate that's around the constitutionality that will get forward, and some of the issues around debt and other things are probably what will still be discussed. In terms of litigation, Lynn and I talk about this all the time. Today, I was in the business office, and it's like you're at sea, and you're on the deck of a ship that's lurching from side to side, because a couple of weeks ago, we were at the superintendent meeting with legislators, and it was, we're having a delay, we absolutely are having a delay, just don't even question it. It's just a matter of what kind of delay. And then it goes to the conference committee, where people are just sort of stuck and at a stalemate, and things aren't moving. So, you know, at this point, in terms of the merging aspect, and then Lynn and Morgan will have a lot more to say, because they've been giving advice specifically about Northern Mountain Valley. It's, it does feel as if, you know, from week to week, when we have our internal meetings, feels like definitely this thing is gonna happen, and it's a good thing we're doing parallel tracks for everything, because it just goes back and forth all the time. I would not be surprised if the legislature does nothing, and the House points their fingers at the Senate, and the Senate points their fingers at the House. We, you know, so that's where it is today. So this time last month, we were saying, boy, there's definitely gonna be a delay. And then we were finding out that, you know, despite the possibility of a delay, the outlook for Sheldon not changing supervisory unions was not very good. And we've got the Agency of Ed recommending for the shift to happen, and the state board would in fact be the ones making that decision. And I do not expect, we would certainly, we talked about this before, we would write a letter requesting that they not merge, should there be a delay. I do not, at this point, the news we're getting is not particularly hopeful for that.
So I think that there's two parts to that, right? Like, there's the notion of whether or not Sheldon will be merging with the Northern Mountain Valley Unified Union School District, and then the notion of whether or not Sheldon will remain in Franklin Northwest or move to Franklin Northeast. And I think that that's the part, I know Emily, I want to just say a couple of things, because you haven't been at those NMB meetings. But Sean and Julia have heard this part just about. If there was going to be that move, if there wasn't going to be that move to Franklin Northeast has nothing to do with this legislature at all.
Right.
Because it is just the State Board of Ed that has that authority. It's not the legislature. So that's the part that I want people to be clear about, because I think that there may be some misconceptions out there, that if there's a delay granted to Sheldon to merge to the Northern Mountain Valley Unified Union School District, that that might mean that you're staying in Franklin Northwest. And that actually isn't what it means. So if you are granted that delay so that you don't have to join Northern Mountain Valley, you still may come to Franklin Northeast, which you may come as a single district. So we have said, and the SU board has also said, that we will support you if you choose that you would want that delay, we would support by writing a similar letter. I think that our goal, and Julie and I have talked about this a few times, is just preparing you for whatever path is ahead. And so we've been working really hard, both of our offices have been working really hard to just kind of navigate those potential parallel pathways, really kind of three for Sheldon. It would be if you did appeal at the State Board of Ed level and were able to stay as a single district over here, or if you came as a single district to Franklin Northeast, or if you were merged into Northern Mountain Valley. So there are really three possibilities, I guess. Two that I think are more plausible than the third, which I think you all are on that page now as well.
Yeah. And I think we've talked, you know, I don't know what meeting we talked about, probably the Northern Mountain Valley meeting, but that if Franklin Northwest goes down the delay path, then it, I guess, I'll say it this way, if they don't go down the delay path and they are merged this year, it is highly unlikely that the State Board would grant any type of delay to the supervisory union. Is there any inkling, I guess they just organized, they might not have any decisions yet about what they, what path they want to go down?
No, because this board isn't the board that would make that decision. It's the elected board, and frankly, I think they're hoping they don't have to make it. They would prefer to have the legislature make that decision, which is sort of where the Senate and the House are in different camps. So I can't, what I can get a sense, though, is that apparently the Agency of Ed is supporting the transition no matter what, because it would be preparing Sheldon for the eventual So I don't know, that's in the, for what it's worth category. I don't know, but given that it's not a legislative decision, that it's a decision that was made by the State Board of Ed, I, you know, I think that there's a higher likelihood that no matter what the scenario, that you would be moving toward Franklin Northeast Supervisory Union.
Is it okay if I just say a couple of things about that? So I think that when you came to the first meeting for NMB, and we were kind of talking through the written testimony that you provided to the legislature, and you expressed some of the concerns about the work that would need to be done for a successful transition for Sheldon. So we wanted to have an opportunity for us to come to you and say, we've been trying to track that on our end for many months, to track what is that work going to be, because we've been trying to take that, that parallel path with, with all of the schools in our system. So we wanted to have the opportunity to just say that, you know, we've been attending to those things. I know Laura and Morgan have been working really closely together around budget. Julie and I have been having many conversations about the law and the governance piece, and Christie and I have met, we, my special ed team has been trying to meet with...
We met today.
With Christie's special ed team, and there's some work with our curriculum. I think you might have had two meetings today.
Yes.
Right? So they're tracking out all of the pieces. We know there are gonna be some big things, like shifting some things in special education into a new system. So they've plotted through and developed an action plan of how that work's gonna get done. I know there were some questions about, is there money for this work to get done? And we talked about that last night. There's no, because we're in that final phase of the Act 46 piece and the fourth merger, there's no additional money that comes to do these. So it would be money that we would, would have to set aside at our SU level to make that transition happen. So we're prepared to do those things. Are there gonna be things that we haven't anticipated? I mean, I'm sure, just like when you, you know, you do other things, like move in your personal life, there are things that you don't foresee. So we're doing our best to try to foresee all of those pieces. So I know that Laura and Morgan are trying to figure out not only the budget pieces, but also the benefit pieces for the teachers, and, you know, we...
There's a meeting on Friday, I think, to talk about insurance and third-party administration, and what that would look like. I know we have early childhood meetings to occur. The tech departments have been meeting, and I just got another email today about some ideas that they have in terms of the action planning.
Yeah. So they, that part works out really well, because they're, what are they always getting?
Uncle and nephew.
Uncle and nephew, yes. So they've worked together well before. They'll be able to work in transition through that piece. But I guess I just wanted to assure you that we're really trying to attend to all of those pieces. And you actually had, we finished our teacher negotiations around maybe a month ago at this point, and you had a teacher at the table for that process. And I know that you had already ratified a master agreement with your teachers in December-ish. So your teachers are seeing the master agreement that was negotiated in Franklin Northeast. They're, they're gonna be considering that master agreement this week. So that's kind of one of the, the steps that'll have to be figured out, is if this group of teachers, they have a choice. They could stay with your, the master agreement that you ratified with Franklin Northwest, and we'll honor that, or they could vote to ratify the Franklin Northeast master agreement. So I think they're gonna be taking a deep dive into the comparison of the two and put them side by side on Thursday. So.
So one of the parts that you're promoting is the supervisory union level staff. And I know that they haven't sort of gone, they haven't chosen a contract yet or a master agreement. What's the timeline if we, if we have a lot of supervisory union level staff, so special educators or speech and language or whoever, if they decide that they want to stay with Franklin Northwest, what's the timeline for hiring those replacements or...
So we're, I think I probably shared this, I don't know what depth I shared it at the NMB meeting, but one of our goals is about attracting and retaining high-quality teachers. So we did a lot of work in our master agreement around goal-setting and making sure that we're doing that, doing everything we can to attract high-quality teachers. So one of the things, we've talked to the other boards within the supervisory union, we still have to talk to the FNESU board, just about comfort level of offering contracts on time, because no matter how this plays out, you are not gonna have an approved budget until late in June. So we would typically wait until you get an approved budget, and then you wait through that, you know, rescind period, like 30 days after the approved budget, before you would offer contracts. So we don't, we're not gonna be able to do that this year, and if we leave our teachers out there without a contract, they're all gonna look and try to go somewhere else. And I think that our goal in this process has definitely been to protect kids and protect teachers. We want to see this be as smooth a transition as it could be for all of them. Christie and I talked about, when you walk into Sheldon Elementary at the start of next school year, you're still gonna, this is still your building, you're still gonna have kids, you're still gonna have familiar teachers in this building. It shouldn't be, you know, that there's something that feels entirely different about this place. So just making sure that we're attending to what we need to attend to. Our goal is to be able to offer contracts on time. So our SU meeting is April 16th. In our master agreement, we have to notify teachers if there's gonna be a reduction in funding. In our master agreement, we have to, uh, notify teachers if there's going to be a reduction in force by April fifteenth. So we typically offer on the sixteenth. Uh, this year it'll be, we're hoping for the seventeenth. So we're, we've been working with, um, with Julie and with Laura to make sure that we have a, the good, a good sense of, um, we're offering contracts to in this building. So I'll be coming around with contracts to buildings, um, on that day is the plan. And in terms of, um, Julie and I had this conversation.
Just today, we, I worked with, uh, leadership, uh, for the association, um, and the Uniserv Director for the Vermont N E A as well to, um, make sure that we had, um, earlier notification because we're actually going to be offering contracts still before their budgets. But, um, May first and, uh, that, so we really wanted to be sure if I was offering an S U employee who's assigned to Sheldon, uh, Swanton or Highgate, um, that we had already known who is going to exercise bumping rights.
Right, right.
And so we have done that, um, and have pretty much everyone's, um, notification of what their plans are, uh, specifically around bumping rights, not whether they're going to sign a contract or not. On those decisions, they still have plenty of time to exercise. But, um, for the most part, we, we know, uh, who's interested in, um, taking a vacancy or, or exercising bumping rights.
And that's if they choose not to sign their contract?
Well, they would, we would then offer them a Franklin Northwest contract. And, and somebody else would not get one unless there was a vacancy or attrition that we could. And all of that takes planning. So we, we moved that date up a little bit so that we could move, you know, work with the budget or, or look at, um, you know, unfortunately during this whole uncertainty, you know, certainly there are more teachers that are looking elsewhere across the Supervisory Union. Um, we have wonderful teachers and some of them are, um, who maybe live south of here are, are looking south of here. So, uh, there, the hope is that we would be able to not have to bump someone, but there, there would be an opportunity through attrition if, if we knew ahead of time. So that's the system we're working through. I don't want to be any more detailed than that in open session, but.
I just want to add one thing. I think there's been a little bit of misconception around, uh, F N W S U employees who work in this building. So we want to welcome anybody who has been working in this building. We're not opening up positions or asking people to apply. We are, our intention is to offer contracts to all the people who are currently physically working in this building, whether they're a Sheldon employee or whether they're an F N W S U employee. And I think Julie's just trying to make sure that if someone is going to bump out of here, that she does the reduction in force to anyone else, that that might bump on her other end. And I would hope that if that happens, you let them know that there are openings in Franklin Northeast.
Absolutely.
They should, um, apply with us.
So is it fair to say that we have some idea at this point about potential?
Mm-hmm. And I did put in executive session, um, contract discussion so that we can be a little more specific.
Yeah. Oh, so, so in the event that there are people that we know who are leaving, do we have to wait until July first? Do those, those things can be put into motion?
We, so I think you should give me some direction tonight as the Sheldon Board, in case you come to us as a single district. I have asked for, the boards have not asked for a formal motion, but I've said, are, are you comfortable? Because there's nothing comfortable about this process. This is not how we typically do business. So it's, you're kind of, you're promising expenses before you know with certainty what your revenues are going to be. The cost of not doing that, though, is losing your staff. We can't, in my mind, wait until July because we owe it to our kids to be fully staffed with the best teachers that we could possibly have. So I, my intention is to fill positions and to, to keep us moving forward. I think the one conversation point that we still have, there are a couple of principals, uh, throughout the S U that have added new positions that, that are not, they're not classroom positions. They've added, you know, maybe an interventionist position or something like that. We, we may not go quite as quickly as in filling those, uh, positions. But if, if it's an existing position that someone has vacated, we're going to work to try to get those filled.
Question, on the budget part, are we voting on specifically Sheldon budget or we combine into budgets? When do we vote to vote?
So as of today, um, the Northern Mountain Valley Board last night, um, has, has voted to warn the budget for May twenty-first. So the budget and the elections will happen on May twenty-first for Northern Mountain Valley. There is still the question of delay coming from the legislature. Um, and I think the best way to, to put it right now is if, if that becomes an option, we'll have to look at things differently. And, and we may have to warn a Sheldon budget if that is the path that Sheldon ends up on, I think. Um, but at the, today, we are part of the Northern Mountain Valley Board and as a, as part of that board, we warned that last night.
So when I come to vote on the budget, I'm voting for twenty million dollars instead of six million dollars to say, just for numbers.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. Because I don't, in theory, I don't know what the budget here is. I just know what the whole budget is.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So there, there are going to be, just like we've done at Sheldon, there'll be informational meetings and there'll actually be four opportunities, um, this year. It'll be won at in each community.
But even then, I won't know.
Oh, no.
What the numbers are for here, I just know the whole number.
Right, right.
And the other question is, what's the tax rate on that? For that part, nobody knows yet neither.
Um, I can talk a little bit about that. So there, there are four levers that are affecting the tax rate. It's the C L A, um, it's the yield amount, which is set by the legislature each year as they're headed out of Montpelier. We have a guess at where that's going to be, but we don't know, um, for sure yet. Um, equalized pupils, which is roughly the number of kids you have in your system. And then the, um, the education spending, which is your budget less whatever revenue's coming in. Um, in terms of the budget that was warned last night, um, at N M V, my guess is that the Sheldon tax rate after the C L A is going to be about a dollar thirty-three. Um, and we would expect because Sheldon and Bakersfield are the, the two highest, um, tax rate towns currently in N M V and Berkshire and Montgomery are the lowest, that in this first year, they're all going to have to move to that one tax rate. So we're thinking that Sheldon and Bakersfield are going to see a lower tax rate. Berkshire and Montgomery are going to see a higher tax rate in that first year.
And I've come to the same conclusion we did two years ago, the budget went up, but the tax rate went down for us.
Right.
And it could be the same thing, the budget goes down, but the tax rate goes up. It's like, right, there's no rhyme or reason to the answer.
Right, you can, you only control one part of that puzzle and it's, um, often not the part that has the biggest impact.
It's a little refreshing sitting here.
Hearing somebody else say that.
Do, do we say the same thing?
Yes.
Validation.
See, guys, I'm not crazy.
So here's a question I have around the warning. Are you going to be warning the election of board members for Montgomery and Sheldon on that same day, May twenty-first?
Board, N M V board members, yes. So, uh, on that day, on the twenty-first, there'll be an election of board members because each, so everyone in Sheldon is going to vote on the whole slate of board members. So you'll get to weigh in on board seats that are open in Bakersfield and in Berkshire and in Montgomery, um, as well as Sheldon. So you get at the proportionality part, um, that's why we're able to have equal representation on that board because you get to weigh in on all of the board seats in all of the towns.
So do we have petitions, um, that people can, can get?
That's a great question. So do you want to give them the details of the?
It's a relatively short timeline. So petitions are available on the Secretary of State's website and they can get them from me as well. Um, they are due to the district clerk, who's also the town clerk in Berkshire, on Monday to get on the ballot. Um, sixty signatures are needed. We just put out a press release this morning, um, hoping that the newspapers pick it up. And, um, I put it out to board members as well. I don't know what the experience is here, but, uh, board seats are generally not contested by huge groups of people.
I think I've heard that might be in here too.
So knowing what a tight turnaround it is, I think we talked about this last night, but it, well, I guess the first thing is, can we put that on Facebook page? Just that petitions are available, they're due by the fifteenth, you need sixty signatures.
Yeah, I was going to ask that tonight. I think the press release is a little clunky to put on Facebook, but we can.
Yeah, but just with some links. Um, and, and so I think knowing all of that and knowing what a tight turnaround, one of the questions was last night, um, what happens if there are positions, um, board seats without an attached person to vote for, right? And so, uh, the person could be elected by write-in with thirty votes, is that?
I think it's thirty, I haven't confirmed that, but.
And, and then if nobody is written in for that position, that position will then be appointed by the N M V Board and it has to be a Sheldon resident.
Yes.
And regardless of what type of budget we're voting on, no matter what we are voting, the towns are voting on N M V board members, right?
Yes.
Okay, I wonder.
Because if you get a delay, you're still going to be a part of that N M V Board for that following year to be working on.
So they could vote on a Sheldon budget, but we're still going to be voting on N M V board members no matter what.
Yes.
Okay.
It might mean that they have to vote twice because your Sheldon budget vote would be on a different day.
Yeah.
And you would need Sheldon board members. Right, this board would want a Sheldon.
Yeah.
And as with everything in the legislature, you can change that and cover it to make it.
Yeah. Right now, that's where it stands right now.
It's a full-time job to follow how it's, it's aging.
So there are four informational meetings for that N M V budget vote. Um, and they are on May twentieth, they're all at seven o'clock in the evening. They are on May twentieth in Berkshire, May fourteenth here in Sheldon, May thirteenth in Montgomery and May ninth in Bakersfield. And it's my understanding that if I'm a Sheldon resident, I could go to the Montgomery meeting, is that?
Absolutely.
Whatever's available or is?
That was one thing on my to-do list today that I didn't get to. So I'll try to get that out on our Facebook page too, when those, um, informational meetings will be. Uh, and also the part about getting the, um, petitions signed and in by Monday. It's my computer back, can you relax?
Assuming that will take the place of your other board meeting.
So we, we have that board meeting scheduled, um, and I think if there's business that we need to conduct, we could do it prior to, um. And we could either shift that board meeting to five-thirty to allow for enough time, or we can keep it at six and, and just have consolidated, yeah.
So we'll look and see, you know, if you want the warrant, if it's just warrants, you can wait.
Right.
You know, if, if there's any other business or something urgent for the boards.
Yeah, yeah. So let's plan first, uh, just a normal six o'clock meeting. And if, if as the agenda's getting developed, if there are other things, we can, okay, we'll be shifting it.
Okay, when you're saying we're voting on the board members, it's like, like we do with the justice piece, there's fifteen names, you need to choose eight of them?
I'm not sure what the ballot actually looks like. Is it separated out by town?
It's separated out by town and by seat. So you will see, um, in this case, there'll be five different seats that you get to vote on. And the first one will have one person or two, three people and you'll pick one of those, one or two or three. And then the next one will have two names. So it's, um, it's a single election for each of the five seats.
So it might say Bakersfield for a term, a Bakersfield representative for a term of three years. And then it would list whoever is running for that seat. And then Bakersfield representative, well, I think we only have one from that town. And the Berkshire representative for a term of two years. And then you'll know, you'll pick from whoever the candidates are for each of those seats.
But I could vote for Bakersfield and Berkshire, one in Montgomery.
Yeah, in Sheldon.
We will have two, a one-year and a two-year seat open for Sheldon.
One and two for them.
So, yeah.
And is it on that board, is it, does everybody have a one and two-year term?
Everybody has a three-year term, but it's, we had to stagger them a certain way to get everybody up and running.
I think that's why you end up with the one, because of the rotation, they've already been operational for that year.
So there must be like two at large because there's only four towns. You're saying there are ten?
No, there's eight.
Oh, there's eight seats.
There's eight seats, but, um, three of them don't have to run yet. So they'll be running either the next year or the year after that because everyone will be on a staggered three-year term.
So there won't, after this year, there won't be another year unless something weird happens, that there will be two Sheldon seats. It will always only just be one Sheldon seat. Um, so with the action plans that have been created between the two S U's, is there a general idea of what the staffing is going to need to look like over the summer to achieve all of this? I'm, I'm, I guess my biggest concerns are the Supervisory Union staff and like what that will look like. But, um, I'm worried about our special ed kids and, and making sure like their plans get merged over so that on the first day of school starts, all of that like background work is done.
Summer school for kids who require that, those kinds of things.
So we've talked a little bit about that process. We've, um, we've talked about, Christie and I talked about it on Friday. I think we talked about this on Friday. Um, you know, they're shifting from one system that I can't remember the name of to sped doc. So I think that's the, the, kind of the bigger worry in special, in the special ed transition. So we had talked about trying to see if we can get access for Sheldon a little earlier than July one so that as they're writing this spring's I E Ps, that maybe they could try to get it into the sped doc piece and we could get some training, uh, for the staff at this point. We've also talked about, um, staggering in. But I think that, I don't know where they landed with their meeting today, but that's what they were trying to get at, is what's the best way to do that? And, or hire someone to input?
Well, and they just did it a few years ago.
Right.
So, um, and not that it's the same system that it was a few years ago because it's now a web-based system versus a database system that they had previously. But veteran staff will be pretty familiar, um, and, um, so I don't know what they landed on, but you can.
So that, um, I would say it's a loose action plan right now based on some, they were going to look into a few things because one, one thought was to be sure you do the, um, what you call the cover page.
All the data.
Yeah, so all that first date data, but then, um, upload a P D F of the I E P and as it becau-, as you, um, either amend or renew it, that you would then, um, input it in. Or, you know, if you happen to have a free moment. Um, so that was, that was one plan, but they wanted to see if that was really even possible, to upload a P D F if that would make sense. Um, and the other, the other, the other thing that was said was your special educators will not have to do this. They will be responsible for that. We will, we will figure out how we will either do it at central office or, um, hire to have it done. Um, and, and it could be, you know, hiring some of our special educators to do some of that work over the summer. Um, but it was, it, thinking about the timeline, there was, there was a recognition that it would not be able to be done before the end of the contract period. Right, they wouldn't be done before the end of school, it wouldn't be possible. So there is, there is a loose action plan, um, but definitely some attention to it, knowing that it's a bigger job.
Oh, actually, um, I have early childhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I've had a couple of questions for, um, potential kids moving into Sheldon preschool because, uh, N M V Northeast, it's a little different. Who should people be calling to be looking at for registering kids in their programs for preschool or something like this? It'd be more of the at-home, not coming to school, but.
Right now, we are, um, taking care of all of those, you know, especially kids who are, um, the birth to three population, kids who'd be transitioning to three for special education, um, and then, um, sort of enrolling in the universal pre-case system as a whole or, or, uh, coming to. to register for a school-based program. And then that, so that families aren't confused, we're taking care of all that registration, and then we'll work on how that gets transitioned to the appropriate people in Franklin Northeast.
Okay.
So, we want people to be able to call the early childhood office, so that they have that information, and it's not a, we'll call this person, they'll call that person.
Right.
And we do want, that was on my list of the next meetings to set up.
Right, we need to talk through that.
Is it anticipated that Sheldon will eventually leave the collaborative and move to what Franklin Northeast has, which is a, I think it's an administrator, billing administrator?
They're school, school-based, and we have one, one leader that serves as a facilitator of the early childhood group. So, we've, we've kind of decentralized early childhood, I don't remember how many years ago. Eight. It's been a while. And so I think that that, that will feel a little different in this transition, because we don't have the collaborative where we are, but I'm confident that we can put our heads together to figure out how to navigate this. You have, you have teachers in your building, you have special educator, so I'm confident that we can work through that, and we have some pretty skilled early childhood teachers who will be teaming with early childhood teachers from this building.
We don't really have a collaborative politically anymore. We don't share costs. We, we just, you know, really the difference is that we have a director versus an administrator that takes that on, given our numbers, if that's made sense. But we will be able to do an action plan for early childhood, because there are differences in how things happen, and we want to make sure that there, nothing falls through the cracks there, especially for families.
So, I don't want you to get, get the impression that we think that, that we're trying to communicate this is all gonna be easy.
Oh, no.
But we're, we're willing to do the hard work to make this a smooth transition for everybody here in Sheldon, and we know that, you know, from everything I've heard about this staff and from Christie, and I already know from Julie and Laura, is that people here are hopefully also gonna be willing to, you know, be open and roll their sleeves up and know that, you know, there may be, we're gonna try to make it as smooth as possible. We're not saying that there won't be a bump or two, but we're gonna, we'll be there to help support and navigate through when we find those places.
Thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it. And I would love for you to come to all of our future meetings, if you're available, just so we can keep that collaboration going. And I know that you guys are doing a ton of work outside of these meetings, but I think it's just good for us to hear, one, so that we're not clogging up Franklin Northwest or Franklin Northeast meetings, these Sheldon-specific details, but just so we can get the word out, too, that there are concrete plans for all this, and we're all working together.
We do appreciate you inviting us here. We'd be happy to, to come to future meetings. I wanna be transparent that we'll probably divide and conquer. This is a night where we'll now have three meetings backed into the night, so you'll maybe not see both of us together typically, but we'll look at the agenda and see what makes sense to go.
Now, did you have anything that you hoped to discuss with the board in the executive session around contracts? So, is it possible for you to invite Lynn in as well? And that's obviously up to the board, but as we are talking about contracts in a way that two superintendents are involved in some of these conversations, it might make sense to do that directly, rather than to have me interpret Lynn and vice versa.
Do you guys have other meetings that you have to get to?
You are it for us.
Are you sure?
Yes. I delegated the third meeting we don't have to go to.
So, are we okay to keep our executive, executive session at the end of the meeting? I was just gonna suggest maybe we do it now, but if you guys are okay to hang.
Because honestly, the superintendent's report was mostly legislative updates, so, you know, and I will email that to you directly, but I, but I don't, honestly, I don't have a ton more than what we've just been talking about now, so that makes it shorter.
I did my board report last night.
Yeah.
Miss Emily, if you've already read it, or I can, it was not very long, anyway, because I knew we had the students.
That's fine. That'll be great.
So, the only new business we have is those teacher contracts, which we'll discuss in executive sessions, so we'll be onto the business report.
I think your financial report, if you want first, I guess you'll.
I know, I have to change things every, every time.
So, you haven't seen a financial report in a while, I think since January, maybe? So, this is reflective of anticipated revenues and expenses through the end of last month. On the front page, just to highlight a couple of changes in revenues, a reminder that your transportation reimbursement about a quarter of the way down has now been zeroed out, because we're just netting that from your anticipated expense. About halfway down, your special ed expense reimbursement. Special ed is tricky, and I don't know if Morgan's experiencing the same thing right now, but as I've said before, revenues aren't quite flowing, and reconciliations at the state level aren't happening the way that maybe they have. We actually have some schools that they said they sent us money on December thirteenth, and we can't find it, so Sheldon's not one of them, but we're following up and not getting a lot of response, so. But what I can say, what I do know is that your local special ed costs, or your paraprofessional costs, are down significantly from what we had budgeted. Your S U costs, alternatively, are higher than what we've anticipated. So, I've tried to adjust those expenses, and I've tried to adjust the revenues to what I think is, is going to happen, but bear with me as we get through next week. We're getting that last payment for the year, and hopefully some follow-up on the questions that we've sent out to Elena, and so stay tuned. I'm probably being more conservative again than I need to be, but that's typically what I do until I have better information. The only other thing on the revenue side, your Medicaid reimbursement is up a little bit from what we budgeted, and I, I think I've mentioned this, but we've sort of re-purposed those Medicaid funds for after-school program, and then a portion of Joanna DeRose and summer school. Joanna DeRose and summer school were already there, but the after-school program is something we're just trying to make more consistent across the S U to make it a little easier on everyone when it's time to do those plans. Under instructional programs now, speaking to the expenses, as I, actually, no, this is your eighth salary, so paraprofessionals, showing a little bit of savings there, about thirteen thousand dollars from what we budgeted. I'm pretty certain of these now, as we move through the year. Tuition bills, for the most part, under the five hundreds, have been received and paid, and so those are pretty solid at this point. As you can see, Ennisburg, there's about a hundred thousand dollars worth of savings there, but then M V U is over by about seventy thousand, so we did pretty good, if you look at those tuition numbers. I think we captured, most kids actually ended up going where they said they were going to go. Healthcare reimbursement, the arrangements, I'm not sure if I mentioned that last time in Sheldon, but we don't think we're going to have to ask schools to pay out any more money to the S U on, for that purpose, and so I'm anticipating about ten thousand dollars, that's through every H R A line in this budget right now, and I'm hoping I don't even have to ask a school for that, but I'm, worst-case scenario would be the ten thousand. Turning the page to special education, under the paraprofessional salaries, I'm on page two now, you'll see that we're anticipating, as I spoke about earlier, to under-expend that paraprofessional line by almost ninety thousand dollars. And so, like I said, some of that's been moved to the S U level costs. And other than that, page five is where you'll see those S U special ed costs. Next time I bring them, I'm hoping we'll have solid numbers for you. Right now, I'm reflecting that you're over about fifty-three thousand dollars from what we budgeted, but there's I D A, I D A money to take into account, there's mainstream block money, and then there's your reimbursement revenue. So, we'll see next week how that goes. The only other thing that I've adjusted under plant operations on page six, I've tried to identify with working with S U Day and A P and looking at bills, what your actual electric and utility bills are going to be for the year, so we can get those as close as possible. So, those have been adjusted, about four thousand dollar savings anticipated in heat and fuel, and about a little over seven thousand dollars anticipated for electricity, which is always nice. So, currently projecting a carryover of a little under fifty thousand, hoping we can do that in a positive direction as we finish out the year. Speaking to some of the conversations around healthcare, and how that transition's going to happen, internally at Franklin Northwest, we've also been talking about possibly trying to pay out the month of July, and I'm gonna try to say this in a way that makes sense, the month of July and August, and actually have those expenses hit the current year rather than next year, because right now, we show the expense from July one to June, teachers are covered until August, so they run September one through the end of August. We've moved M V U, so the actual months being expended are the, are through August, but to do that and get on that right cycle, so that they correspond, you have to actually pick up an extra two months of health insurance one year, and that's never been possible or feasible here, so, but we are thinking about that as we're trying to project year-end spending, as if we can get on that cycle and get ahead, as we try to figure out who's gonna pay bills when, as we move through, and H S A, H R A, and all of that, it might be cleaner to do that, if we can, but it's about, I had our benefits coordinator figure it out, it's like almost fifty-five thousand dollars that we would have to pick up, so. I hate to be the bearer of bad news.
That might be your carryover.
That might be your carryover, if we can get there, and that's to be determined, but it's, it's something that we're talking about. And it's just always been that way. That's just how it's happened. We actually operate on three different years, so it's January to December, not plan year, not plan year, I'm using the wrong terminology. January to December is the, the health plan year, but our coverage for teachers goes from September one to the end of August, increases happen, and we operate on a fiscal year, which is July one to June. It's been my Achilles' heel since I started as a business manager, and why that ever would have come to be, but there we are. So. Anything that I haven't found out about in the last couple of weeks? We haven't had a lot of time to talk about anything current year.
Just a couple of moving pieces with some student needs.
As you always do. You had the bond anticipation rates question, too.
Do you wanna do warrants first or after?
Oh, yes.
Warrants now.
Didn't want to forget.
I've got it, I got it ready.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for March for six hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Those in favor of approving the March warrants, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
And then I had mentioned to the board before the meeting started that the electric bill fell out of cycle again, so I had asked you to consider allowing us to pay that prior to the bill being reviewed. The board was agreeable to that. Thank you. Okay, so bond anticipation notes, so I had explained to you at the last meeting that the bond counsel, Paul Giuliani, has, has recommended that we actually obtain or work through and actually have Sheldon have existing debt prior to the end of the fiscal year, so that, that debt would transfer, cover your ears, to the new towns and be shared, rather than just stay with Sheldon, and so I've done that. Union Bank gave a rate of two-point-two-three, People's United, two-point-zero-five, Community Bank, for their existing, no, you're not an existing customer, sorry, Sheldon's not, it's two-point-six percent, and People's Trust was one-point-six.
Wow.
We did discuss that I probably, and I've been open to the banks about this, that we probably will not have to borrow much, if any, of that line of credit, but they're all understanding, you know, what we're up against here, so I guess my recommendation, I have them here if anybody wants to see them, but my recommendation would be to go with People's Trust Company at a rate of one-point-six percent. It's your, it's your operating account bank, anyway, so it just makes things easier. So, if I could have a board motion to approve us awarding the bond anticipation note line of credit to People's Trust Company and authorizing, I guess I would probably need all of you to come in and sign. Are you, when is your next, are you having your next meeting, or that was the one you're not sure about? I think I could wait.
You can meet.
They're gonna meet.
Okay, so actually, I could probably, waiting until then for the signatures would be okay. So, if you just approve a warning, I'll get all the documents, and I'll bring them.
So, I can make.
Did you catch all that?
I'm trying, but then you talked to me and I lost it. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the bond anticipation note to go with People's Trust at a rate of one-point-six percent.
And that would be for the amount of the Vermont municipal bond that was approved, which is one-point-seven million.
For one-point-seven million.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Christie, are you, do you have anything other than your paper from last night?
Uh, no. And I lied, I did read your, I did last night, 'cause I remember the munchkins with, I'm like, yes, I remember that. No, I read, you're okay. When you came, well, yeah, probably when you came in, in the gym, they were doing self-defense today. So, it was a, you know, I don't know how big the crowd ended up being. I don't think it was a crowd. There was about fifteen people, maybe, in there when I came in here. It's also the first year that the P G O has done these wellness events, so. It's nice. Yeah, they were excited.
And next week, you're doing Drums Alive.
Drums Alive with Maureen Sidero.
Great, Glenn. And Julie, you were also. Yeah, I, what I had was more of an M V U report, and then the legislative updates, which I'm sure you've received as members of Vermont School Board Association, but I just, you know, wanted to make sure people in the community were aware, so I'll make sure those get posted.
So, our future board meetings will be May fourteenth, we'll have a meeting at six o'clock, with a budget informational meeting to follow at seven for Northern Mountain Valley. I will post the other dates and times for the other meetings in the other towns, so that if people can't get to the Sheldon one, they could try to get to the other ones.
I just realized that that is, I am, will be heading to Tri-State that night.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't realize we were already that far.
It's ridiculous.
So, I can give you a bond anticipation document?
I can be trusted with people giving me signatures. I promise.
Is there anything else that you anticipate meeting the business, me, this business manager, for? Because are you going to Tri-State? No? I guess that might change for me, too. Pretty people.
I know. The next, I, I have to look at some of the meetings that week, and making some changes. M V U, I won't be able to. We'll talk.
And then I see Franklin Northwest, do I have your meeting to be scheduled possibly in May first?
Yes, no, I'm not, I, we're still gonna need a Franklin Northwest board meeting, I think, in May. I wanna figure it in. We have some contracts, so. We have some contracts, so I want to make sure that we are able to have a board that can offer contracts to people. Um, May first will be the first meeting of the elected board of Mississippi Valley, um, so maybe we'll do a doubleheader? I don't know. So I just, I couldn't put a time or.
We'll just stay tuned.
Stay tuned. We may very well want you, we always want you, but we, we may very well want you to come to an SU, and there may be a special board meeting, um, if we need to meet some timelines, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we are at our anticipated executive session. Um, we're going to be discussing SU-level teacher contracts, um, and so I would attest that premature public knowledge will clearly place the board or other party at a substantial disadvantage, um, and I would undertake a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session.
I will second.
All those in favor of moving into executive session at seven twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.